Lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 3rd, 2019 Board of Sletman's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, department reports, the building department, fire department, town administrators' report. We have several action items, including accepting a few donations and concurring with some appointments and resignations. And we're requesting to authorize the Conservation Commission to tentatively agree to hold a conservation restriction on a parcel of land. We have discussion on the community compact grant vendor selection, request for a letter of support from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for their application to create the Southern West County Economic Development Organization, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Okay, public service announcements. Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
I don't have any either.
Mary? Okay, I just reminded there will be a public reception for our new town administrator next Tuesday, September 10th, here at the Town Hall, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. So we welcome any and all to come in. Also, next Wednesday, there's a public informational forum at the Public House from 263 Organic at 6 o'clock. The public is welcome. Do you want to announce again, no outside activities? Oh, okay. Also, because of the triple E, there is still no outside activities from 6:00 PM till 8:00 AM. I noticed they were playing football early on the com and were practicing. So hopefully they're off by now.
A mosquito was detected in Sturbridge.
Yeah.
I know it went out, but just for people who are watching tonight who didn't get that notice.
Okay. Is Nelson here?
No.
No.
You talked to him?
He sent me his report. I knew he was up.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll hold it. Fire Department Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of things for you tonight. I believe you all have a copy of the report.
Yes.
I will note that in the August report, that report was generated on the 25th of August, and the updated total number of incidents for August climbed to 115 before the end of the month, from 85, which is what you have on your report. Other than that, it's pretty much business. As usual, majority of our calls remain EMS-related. We are on track to beat the number of calls that we had last year, which was a historical high. If we continue on this trend, we'll beat that by a fairly wide margin this year. So our call volume continues to rise.
Why do you think that is, to that level?
There are a number of reasons, including an aging population, the transient population that comes through Sturbridge, the rise in the number of Section 12s that we are responding to at group homes and other facilities. There's just, there's so many contributing factors to it. Mutual aid calls to area communities continue to rise. And I think you have, in your report packet, there's a comparison of the number of calls that we responded to outside of Sturbridge, as well as the number of calls that we requested outside agencies to come in. So there's a lot that go into the number. Any questions on either July or August?
Questions from the board or comments? Guess not.
Okay. I want to bring to your attention the fact that we conducted our first Junior Fire Academy this year. The program was brought to me by two of our firefighters, Jen Ash and Matt Bono. The idea was to get 13- and 14-year-old students from the Tantasc School District involved and give them an orientation into the fire service. We had 10 students over a week-long period. They received orientation in basic firefighting, from vehicle extrication to structure fire response. They were able to use a fire extinguisher. They were certified in CPR while they were at the, during the week. They got to take a trip to the Boston Fire Museum, and they got to see life flight land at the firehouse, which was a really, really cool experience. The response was overwhelming. The parents couldn't have been happier. The biggest question was, what's next for these kids? So we are in the planning stages of what's next for next year, for not only those 10 children, or those 10 students, but for additional students. We're contemplating doing more than one week, and doing a basic week, and then an advanced week. But it was very, very well received. If you follow social media, you saw that there was plenty of, plenty of positive comments about it. And I'm very proud of the firefighters for putting it together. And all of our firefighters donated their time to do the instruction during that week. So I thank them publicly as well.
How many girls versus, not versus boys, but what was the mix? I'm curious.
Three females and seven males.
That's pretty good.
So that's a pretty good...
But it seems to be like an underrep, girls and fire industry is a little underrepresented.
Yes. And our overall hope with this program is to try and encourage the younger generation to get involved with the fire department. Up till now, our age cutoff for our auxiliaries has been 16. We're now contemplating lower than that, so that these kids can become part of the auxiliary. I had six of the 10 parents ask me, how else can my son or daughter be involved? And so we're looking at that possibility, allowing them to come into the auxiliary even earlier than the age of 16. And hopefully they'll become lifelong firefighters for us.
Would be good.
The other thing I wanted to kind of pony off of that, we are now looking at doing a citizens academy for adults. We're in the very beginning stages of planning on that. It would be something we did during the evening for adults, to basically give them an orientation into the fire service. Basically, what do we do every day? So stay tuned for more information on that. And that's all I have as far as my report.
Okay, now you have a request for an appointment, which is quite a bit down on the agenda, but if the board's willing, we could move it up.
Yeah, okay. Josh, come on up.
So this is Joshua Thomas. Josh is a nationally-registered paramedic. He's certified in advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support, and pre-hospital trauma life support. He is pro-board certified firefighter 1 and 2, and he's worked in both the Dalton and the Wilbraham Fire Departments. He has experience in structural firefighting and operating fire apparatus, as well as in private EMS. Joshua has successfully completed all of the pre-employment requirements, including a complete medical examination, a physical agility test, and an extensive background check conducted by the Sturbridge Police Department. He currently lives in Peru, Mass, and most recently worked for county ambulance out of Pittsfield. He has, he will have one year from appointment to establish residency within 15 miles of the town of Sturbridge. He's already indicated to me that he's moving into Spencer as early as this Saturday.
That's good.
I've met with Josh several times, and he's respectful and polite. He's very enthusiastic and passionate about both fire and EMS. He's also met with the town administrator. I respectfully request that you appoint Joshua Thomas to the position of probationary firefighter/paramedic at an initial rate of $20.33 per hour, as per the collective bargaining unit effective tomorrow.
What was the cents on that? 23?
33.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, you also met with the candidate?
I did, and I echo what the chief said. I think this is a fine young man that's gonna do well for us.
Questions from the board?
Comments? Mike?
Chief said, it probably doesn't apply here, because Josh said he's gonna be moving. But is it, is it town policy to, for one year after hire, to move within 15 miles of town? I don't know where that policy came from.
That was a policy that was suggested to me by a former town administrator because of the need to have the firefighters close by the town.
Yeah, well, one year sounds like an awful long time. And I, you know, at some point, I'd like the board to review that with the town.
Well, we can address it at some time. In this case, it's moved because...
Yeah, it's, that's what I said. It's not a move, but I wanted to bring up the question.
No, that's reasonable.
Well, it's still fresh in our minds, so that we can, at some point in the future, address, you know, what, you know, how long it should be before someone moves closer to the town.
I don't think we had any policy on it at all, coming from the board.
No. Isn't there a state policy for police offices for 25 miles, I believe?
That I don't know.
As the crow flies?
Yeah, that I don't know. It was Leon's suggestion, and he went so far as to say 15 miles of any town border.
Yeah.
I know there are some communities that has to be the central part of the town, or so.
Or the fire station, whatever.
No, we can work on that. It's a good point, Mike. Okay, any other comments? Impressive resume. You've accomplished a lot for a young man. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
So moved.
Okay. Do you want to put in the name and the rate and the date?
Make a motion to approve Joshua Thomas as a firefighter/paramedic, effective tomorrow, at a rate of?
23.33.
$23.33.
$20.33.
Wow, my hearing is really off. She's giving you a raise before you start.
Well done.
It's only tax payment.
You gotta like this guy.
At a rate of $20.33, effective tomorrow.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Awesome. Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Awesome. Welcome to Sturbridge Fire Department.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Now that I got things out of sequence, and I see Nelson's here.
Yep, he's here.
Good evening. Of course, I'm here for my monthly report. I turned the papers in, and you saw him file the reports, and the amount of money and everything that come in. So I think what I'll do is, I'll give you a report on all the happenings in Sturbridge and the updates. You know, mostly all the commercial work that's important. I'll start with petro-gas. They're coming along good. They're framing a building out with the wooden studs and stuff. They got all their foundations in. They're hoping to have the building closed by, you know, winter, or when snow comes, so they can start working on the inside. 10-7 Maine, I don't know if you people saw, but hopefully somebody did. It's tore down, it's gone, it's cleaned up. The debris's been removed. They pretty much graded it off. It was the homeowner, the newest homeowner that bought it, that did the work, so it didn't affect the town at all. Edwards Gas, he's got his islands in, his pumps, he's using them. He's cleaned up the garage some, but he's still got the garage on hold as far as his convenience store and everything. He still wants to do it, but he's not doing it right now at this moment. He's seeded the back, he York raped. Mary Donnelly, he painted the building green.
I didn't want to...
I did request that, because you had asked for that.
I didn't request a color, did I?
Not a color, just a clean up.
I just wanted, I didn't want to interrupt you, Nelson, but I did want to say, I'm thrilled with the progress that Edwards Gas made in just like a few short months. For a long time, it was really, well, you know the way it looked, and now it's outstanding. So good luck to them with the convenience store. But for now, I thought the landscaping looks great. So thank you for staying on that.
Okay. Next thing down the line, it's, it's newest happening is Rvezzi's. It's owned by Northern Tree now, the company. And I met the owner of Northern Tree, and the fire department, I had went there. And they're starting to do some work there. He showed it to us, what he's doing. They're gonna put a new sprinkler system. They're gonna make it handicapped accessible, the bathrooms and stuff. As far as the building, they're gonna leave it alone, pretty much for the atmosphere, other than cleaning it up, painting it, fixing the floors, different things, making it look a lot better. And then what he's gonna try to do is get some entrepreneur, some business in their restaurant, like he has now. The only thing he's not gonna touch at the moment is the kitchen, because depending on what goes in there for a business, could change what the kitchen setup will be like. So I think it's all good things, you know, and hopefully somebody comes along and they start using the building.
It's a beautiful building for a restaurant.
It is a beautiful, oh, it's gorgeous. That stairway is just, and he's gonna leave the stairway from what he's saying and everything. So I think that's really, really good. One of the other things we've been working on is that we have had classes for that GOTMS, for that new permitting system. We're going from what they used to call the V360 interface to the 8.0 Civic platform seller. They're hoping to go live with that, I believe in October sometime, maybe mid-October, somewhere around there. Hopefully all the departments gonna use it, and it'll make it so everybody can communicate with everybody else. One thing I did want to mention, I did get a complaint about chickens, and I did address it right off. And the Sturbridge blog, there was a lot of stuff on there about it, and I'd like to say it today for people that are watching the TV. They get confused when we, as a town, we accepted the right to farm. The right to farm means five acres and more. You do have the right to farm, but there's always conditions. I mean, and there's still zoning conditions, and you can't necessarily have it right next to your neighbor's lot, or manure that actually smells, or anything like that. And this particular one that I'm talking about had some of those issues. But they did move the chickens, and hopefully they don't come back. And the lady was grateful, and if there's ever any questions, they can come to the building department, and we will discuss zoning, what you can and can't have. The other thing people get confused about with the right to farm is 48 has an exception for farm animals, two years, but you gotta read 48 carefully. It says, "Commercial use." They're not talking about 10 chickens, 12 chickens, 20 chickens in your backyard. You're actually making money with it. The odds of that happening in under two acres with chickens is very slim. I mean, maybe floral or something like that, you might, you might do it, you might see it once in a while, but chickens, you're very seldom gonna see it. So my advice is come and talk to the zoning officer, because chances are, you're not gonna be able to do it. So for the most part, five acres.
When you say confusion on the blog, you mean the community Facebook page?
Yeah, I guess.
So it's also worth noting that that's not an official government Facebook page. A lot of people mistakenly assume it is. I'm not saying there's not some accurate information, but when you Google it, it says, "Community, Town of Sturbridge, Community Government, uh, Community Facebook," but it's not generated by our town administrator. And so information gets on there that isn't always accurate.
Thank you. That clears up really well. And then some other things of interest, I believe Fred's Variety, I've been told they've sold it. I ain't sure who bought it, but I know he sold it. 23 Maine, we, he had an open house a couple, three days ago. He's gonna, he's got, it's a five-unit apartment. It's all new. The building's sprinkled. It's a real nice building. He has it all rented out, I believe, but he's gonna, actually, they're gonna move in September 15th. Basically, he's got all his paperwork to us, everything he needs, you know. I haven't signed the CFC, but I will be signing it in the next few days. The other thing is right up the street, the old compatible canine, the old Allen Market. She sold that to some other people, and they don't know what they're gonna do with the bottom of it yet. It's open. The top, they were working there, and somebody had told me they were working there, so I went there. They did end up having to get a building permit, I mean, an electrical permit and plumbing permit, but they're not really changing the apartment. They're cleaning it up. They're putting a new kitchen in. Kitchens are exempt from the building code. I had talked to them. They seem like pretty good guys. One of them owns George's Pizzas in Brookfield and in Spencer, and the other one owns Bill's Pizza in Rochester and Luster. I asked them what they were gonna do with the downstairs. They're not sure yet. But I like to catch people early, because then I explain to them what they can and can't do, because a lot of times it involves sprinkler systems and stuff. And I'd rather know them, have them know ahead of time than after, because they seem to accept it better. And they told me when they decide what's going in there, they will stop and talk to me. They seem like pretty good guys. I think that's all. Notice them, they all... The other thing, that Route 15, that Petro Gas, originally it was gonna be a, it was gonna be a Burger King, a Subway, a 7-Eleven. No longer a Subway, now it's gonna be a Dunkin' Donuts. So those are the three. Dunkin' Donuts, 7-Eleven, and Burger Kings going there, as far as, at this moment, we know.
Something on Horn of Plenty, or used to be the Horn of Plenty?
Yeah, the Horn of Plenty, what they're doing is, there's a dessert, a liquor place to the left, as you're looking into the building. And I don't think I had it on there, and I should have put it on there, to the right, to that small area that was Crabtree and Evelyn. That's gonna be a optical. Ladies going there for glasses.
You have to...
Oh, okay. And then in the back, they're gonna expand the Thai building, and they're gonna put a bigger bar in there, in that back area. So the building's gonna be really utilized. They shingle the roof. They're fixing a lot of the stuff in there. They're putting new doors and stuff in. They're renovating that section to the left, so it's gonna be a, you know, it'd be a lot nicer building, and it seems to be gonna be full, so it's a good thing.
Right, there was quite an article, I can't think of the names, being put on Facebook about what he intends to do with the dessert, coffee, and wines, and bourbons, and different things, so.
I think he was talking to us some, and what he's hoping is that as people are closing down, and they eat at certain restaurants here, they'll go there for a relaxing time, a couple drinks, and maybe a dessert or something. So I hope it works good for them.
What kind of timeframe are we talking about?
He's hoping to open maybe sometime around Christmas, something like November, December.
Yeah, because it's gonna...
I'm already ready.
He hasn't, he's gotta come for liquor license...
Right, I know, he hasn't.
Come and Vic and all that, and entertainment. He's gonna have entertainment, too. So he's got a few permits to get, but it sounded interesting.
Hmm.
Okay, and then train you, Captain projects. I see you have something down about the window signs. Just that you're discussing it with them.
We're working on it.
Yes. You know, and you know I've expressed my opinion, and opinion of other people, too.
Yes.
But they do, it does need to be addressed.
Absolutely.
No doubt about it.
No doubt about it.
Also, there's mention about sandwich signs? Do we have that many?
Oh, there's a lot of them. It depends on the day.
Let me say this, because I probably should have said this, too. What they're doing is Kevin went around and he took pictures of all the signs, and documenting what we have and where they are. And then Janay's putting them in an Excel sheet, and she's figuring out which ones are legit, which ones are permitted, and which ones aren't. And then they're supposed to give them to me. And if there are many that aren't permitted, I'm gonna go address them. But they're saying, what I've heard is, so far, most of them are permitted signs. There is a lot of sandwich board signs, Mike, around. I agree with you. I thought there was a lot, but I guess they were all permitted, so it's a good thing, you know? When we say sandwich board signs, they're the regular sandwich board signs. I have, just recently, there's been a couple of businesses. One, I had had to complain from somebody on planning, and it was a big one. Took it down. What it is, there was two businesses and one property. And the guy that owns this particular business, he's a really good guy, he had a couple of businesses in town, does, works real hard. I see him there all the time, puts in a lot of hours. The problem was, he had an open sign, but the open sign, they thought it was for the business next door, and he's out in the back. So the solution for him, and I actually stopped there, that's why I was here a little late. I actually went down there, and I looked through all the bylaws. And the only way I could help him, he could have a 12-square-foot banner sign. So I said to him, "Go get a 12-foot banner, put it right up front, put 'open' on it, and you can designate your business on it." So he was pretty happy about that. And then there was one up the street that had too many banner signs, and I had to have those taken down. I was right next door. So one thing leads to another, and it all balances out sooner or later, I guess.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Nelson, I don't know if it was submitted, but the printout of all the permits given and where, and who, we didn't get that.
What happened is Cindy usually does it, but what's odd, and I mentioned to his secretary, by having us the first of the month, and Jeff wants them like so far ahead, well, you're not gonna have that month, so you're not gonna have last month, that's why you don't have it. So anybody that comes early like that, you're never gonna have it. It's kind of a glitch in the system when we change the system.
So we'll get it to you.
So it'll always be, not a monthly, but kind of late, you know?
A week.
Well...
We'll switch the building official to the secretary.
Yeah, that would, that would work, Jeff.
And then we'd have it.
Then you'd have it.
It's always nice to collate what's happening.
And I don't blame Jeff, because he wants it head-on, so you look at it, which is good. And we never really did that before, you know? I understand why he's doing it. It's just that when we meet the first of the month, it doesn't quite work.
Yeah, and when do we change that?
Because it messed me all up.
We used to always get it.
Yeah.
We used to always.
But you see what I'm saying? By him, it's the middle of the month. You're looking for the one at the end of that month, which just came by, and today's only the third, so it just doesn't work. Quite close, though. That's a good question, though, because it messed me all up. I said to Cindy, "Where is that?" And then I got thinking about it, and I said, "Oh, that ain't gonna work."
Well, we will get it, and we'll change your meeting night. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, anything else for us? Okay, the board satisfied? Okay, thank you, Nelson.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the town administrators' report.
Wonderful. Okay. So to start with, they got a letter from the federated church. They're gonna do their pumpkin patch again this year, and they wrote to let us know that on Saturday, September 28th, at 8:00 AM, there'll be a very large truck parked over here unloading pumpkins. So they know it's there. It'll be there several hours, but it's their pumpkin delivery.
The great pumpkin delivery.
Okay. And then we're moving to Outlook email. The current email system is, it's an affiliate of our, an article or a program associated with the website. It's not very, it's not a very good system. It's not very intuitive. It doesn't link to other calendars. So we're moving to Outlook. There is a small increase in price per year. It costs about $2,000 additional per year, but that can be covered, Jeremy thinks, in his budget this year. So there's not a monetary issue with it, but we're gonna roll out Outlook for the town. I think that's gonna be better for everybody. And part of that will be to give you all individual email addresses, town email addresses, and then we'll help you set those up on wherever you would like those to go. To end that, we've acquired the domain name Sturbridge.gov, so we are now using Sturbridge.gov rather than town@sturbridgeMA.us. So the emails will... So the emails will be, you know, @sturbridge.gov. So kind of a more modernized focus on that. Tomorrow, I was supposed to go into Boston for an appeal of a, the COPAS water bill from 2013. This morning at eleven, the appellate withdrew their appeal request, so no need to go to Boston. The issue's done, the bill's been paid, and that issue is resolved.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's been a long
Six years later, yeah. The DEC did come out late last week and did the PFAS testing at the water systems. So we should get results this week or early next week, and we'll know where we are with the PFAS, so. One of the other items that was on my list of things to look into was the Streeter Street Rec Area. So I went out there last week with the Army Corps, Keith Beecher, who's the head of that agency over there. He and I took a walking tour of the recreation area. Beautiful, beautiful spot. It's a nice attraction. The bathrooms are still viable, he has welded the door shut, so there's no vandalism possible. Of course, beach restoration has to take place. The parking lot has deteriorated, there needs to be some vegetation removed. But, you know, for some dollars invested in infrastructure, we can probably get that back up and running. And Annie and Recreation is running me numbers on what it's gonna cost for us to operate it for the summer. So we'll put some numbers together for you to review, probably for budget next year, to see if this is something we wanna do. Access to the location has to be worked out. According to our records, we abandoned that street in 1957. So there's no public road to the Army Corps property. So we, we would have to work that out if this is something the town wants to pursue.
Now, who would we get an easement from? Is it GNF?
Probably on either side. We'd work with both owners. And we did talk to GNF. Kevin and I went out and visited GNF a couple weeks ago, just to introduce ourselves. And we did talk about this possibility. They were okay with the idea, as long as we didn't block access.
Right.
The senior center RFPs are back. So we got seven. We met with the committee, and if you wanna get a group of those, we can give those to you. They're gonna spend three weeks reviewing them and rating them, and get them back. And then we'll collate those results, and see if there's a consensus on a top two or three that, to interview. So that process is moving with the senior center building committee. The request for quote for the personnel classification wage study is prepared. I'm gonna meet with the personnel committee in the next week or so, we just have to pick a night.
No, the twelfth.
Did we pick the twelfth? Okay, so we're gonna go on the twelfth. And since it's not above $50,000, we can just send it out for quotes. The MMA Marketplace has a series of human resource specialist agencies that do these kind of things. So we'll email that to them for a quote, once the personnel committee is okay with it. So finally, and I didn't get a chance to really put this, maybe this needs to be a full agenda item, and probably will be for the next time. But we've been meeting with the RV park owner about his sewer system. The original plan was for him to build an onsite sewage treatment plant, it would cost him about $1.1 million. He's not enthusiastic about that. So he began looking at what would it take to connect to the public sewer. And his engineer looked at Farquhar Road and says, "We can force-mate it to Farquhar Road." And that would be about another million dollars to do. But then came the issue of the tie-on fees, and what that would cost to actually tie onto the system. So that would be anywhere from $0 to $2.5 million, depending on how we're classifying each location, each pad site. So we ran numbers, we had tie-in bond run numbers on what it would it take to run a six-inch main down Route fifteen and connect in there. And that was $2.4 million plus. So the owner of the RV park is proposing, he would build that sewer for us for $2.4 million, all in, to get it to his site. And it would be a public sewer with six-inch capacity, if the town wanted to engage in that kind of agreement with the developer. I'm in support of it. So basically, we would anticipate that his tie-on fees would be used to build the infrastructure, to get to his place. We met with him last week. He is enthusiastic about it, he is supportive of it. I put a call into the town attorney to say, "We need some kind of contractor agreement if we're gonna do this, and start thinking about that, what kind of developer-installed infrastructure agreement we should have, and see if we can get this done on time."
Priscilla.
I, I think that's a great, that's the greatest news for Route fifteen that could possibly be. Because at least that part can be developed, if somebody were to come in, a small piece of the land that could put something on it. I think it's great, that we've been waiting for this, and talking about this, and now we have someone who's willing to
Put it in.
Next, Greg.
Tie-in fees will be?
Tie-in fees will be used for construction.
Was there any talk of having the sewer be by gravity rather than force-mate?
The flow is so small out of that facility. The only person, people to tie on it initially will be the RV park. So they're anticipating between 17,000 and 30,000 gallons a day. So it'll just be a force-mate.
Okay. That's... If there's only seven, how many connections would there be? That's not
There's 300 pad sites.
And there's only 17,000 gallons per day?
Seventeen, between 17 and 30,000. Depends upon the season, and depends on the occupancy of the loan. And that's really where the issue is.
Doesn't sound right, but
It's, well, these are RVs, they're not single-family homes. There's generally two people in them, so you're not talking about massive flow.
You don't think there's enough tie-ins? Just share what you're
No, I, I'm saying it might, it's long-range
We'd have to look at it, and we'd have to also look at a sewer bylaws.
For which point?
Flows and stuff, you know, how, how it's calculated.
How the flow is calculated.
Well, tie-in bond agreed with their assumption on the daily flow. They agreed with that, it's gonna be in that range somewhere. The issue upfront is, because there's few connections on a six-inch main, is the efficiency of the flow. So what we have to watch out for is odor in the line, until we increase the flow, increase the users, because it will be a slow drain to the manhole in front of Public House, or to the lift station in front of Public House. So there'll be odor control apparatus as part of this build.
And Chase, your opinion?
Just a couple of comments, obviously I'm in support of it, he's gonna pay for it. But there are a few things that stick out to me that look a little funny on this. The first being, he got a price of $1.1 million to build a sewer treatment plant, yet he wants to spend $2.4 million to tie in the town.
He does not wanna be in the sewer business. He's running plants and other facilities, it's a headache.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, it's just really important to me that there's no taxpayer dollars involved. Meaning, we get halfway down Route fifteen, he gets all ledge, and everybody's going, "Oh no, this is now a three-and-a-half-million-dollar project." I wanna make sure the town is protected, where Ironclad and the taxpayers are good.
Right, because the town has never paid to put in sewers. Developer always has.
And I don't support it, the taxpayer
And it's, you know, it can't go on the taxpayers', and it certainly wouldn't be fair to the ratepayers either, to foot the bill on it.
So there needs to be major, like, ledge clauses, I mean, we need to be really protective of this.
Yep. This will be in the Route fifteen right away, which is probably a known entity. And no, we probably know what's under there. If not, we'll make sure there's geotechnical upfront.
At his cost, correct?
All the engineering, all the inspections, everything's at his cost.
Mary?
I just agree with what Chase just said, I want to give my support to his sentiments. But also, so, it's just a total wash then? The exact cost of tie-in equals the cost of the sewer? I mean, it just sounds too good to be true, like
Well, we never really established what his tie-on fees would be. We're
We're kind of doing it back, we're doing it, how should I word this? So we haven't determined what the tie-in fees are gonna be. So we're gonna upfront, rather than determining the cost upfront, we're kind of back, we're kind of back-loading into it and saying $2.4, because that's what it's gonna cost to build it?
Well
I guess I don't understand how it's totally a wash.
Well, what it is, is, these aren't single-family homes.
I get it.
And the sewer bylaws do not have a classification for an RV pad site for a tie-on fee. So you can either use an apartment building, or a single-bedroom apartment, you can use a home, or you can use a commercial user. None of those classifications really fit. So if you were to classify each pad site as a single-family home, you're gonna get to $2.5 million. But the board would have to decide at some point what you classify each pad site as for a tie-on fee. Or develop one, or negotiate some fee in the middle. So what we're proposing is, worst-case scenario, your tie-on fee's at $2.5, generally speaking, plus or minus, depending on the exact number of pad sites. He's willing to build the sewer line for us to get to his site for $2.43.
And the $2.5 is based on a single family, because we don't have anything to help us with that?
Yeah, 'cause we ran into
I would like to get, did you get, I mean, this is not my area of expertise. Did we get tie-in, like, how have other communities done it? Have we gotten some input from our engineers on it, or?
We have some engineers looking at it, and what other tie-on fees have been for other communities. But, again, if you're gonna do it per gallon, it's gonna be much less than $2.5 million. If you're gonna do it per location, it's $2.5.
Yeah, 'cause we ran into this problem when Mobile Home down on River Road wanted to tie in. And they looked at each one as individual. And I know there was some discussion at the time that the state had different flows for mobile homes, as opposed to our policy, which has single-family homes
Right.
And apartments.
I remember though, it's, it was exorbitant then, too. Priscilla?
I, I wanna thank the town administrator for at least walking this walk, because this should've been done when this gentleman approached Sturbridge with his conceptual design for the RV park. He had it, it was very extensive. He had all these ideas on what he was gonna do, and how it would impact the community. And it's too bad, because by now, it could've been done, for all, I mean, it might have been done by now. So I, I personally thank the town administrator for taking this on, and looking at it, and giving it a shot. We talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it, and it never came this far. So whether this happens or not, at least it's a discussion that's in the right direction, in my opinion. And like I said, it's too bad that it wasn't discussed with him way back when. Somebody dropped the ball on that one, and that's too bad. But at least the town administrator's taking it forward. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I don't think the ball was dropped, I think it was just that he had all intentions of going ahead on his own, until he discovered the price, and having gone through the experience of other places, so.
Yeah, no, I think, I agree with
Just put in time.
Right, no, I commend the town administrator as well. But he, early on, said he was gonna put in his own self-contained sewer. I don't even think there was any discussion of any
No.
It was discussed at one time.
It was?
Yeah.
I thought, okay.
I don't know, I just
Other, other areas.
I would just hate to lose this opportunity, because it, I mean, if the town's goal really is to get sewer down Route fifteen, here's a big piece of that, that you have an opportunity to take advantage of. And it's really, you know, do you wanna take advantage of this, this, this opportunity? It's a six-inch main, the original plan for fifteen was an eight-inch main. So down the road, when you, when you're gonna increase capacities, tie-in bond has looked at, "Okay, what are you gonna do about that other two inches you're not hitting the main?" So they can reroute some of the other flow down some of the other lines, so the six-inch main will be sufficient. So it's not gonna cause a flow problem in the future, 'cause it can be rerouted. Some of the flow can be rerouted.
Yeah.
Okay, good, Mike?
Yeah. The, the sizing of, of the six-inch main is obviously way bigger than what the RV park would I mean, the minimum flow on a six-inch force main is 200 gallons per minute, so, to make cleansing velocity.
I understand.
So it's, you know, it's way oversized. Who is gonna own and operate the wastewater pumping station that's part of this proposal?
On-site, he will.
Okay. So to extend the sewer down Route fifteen, we'll have to build another wastewater pumping station in the future.
Okay.
That'll be about 30 years from now.
Well, I, I don't know how else you're gonna get sewer down Route fifteen then.
Exactly.
Chase?
And I just wanna clarify something, 'cause I'm maybe a little confused. We're gonna wash the tie-in fees for him to build a line down fifty?
That everybody can use.
But there's not many properties on fifty.
Not yet.
Am I getting that? Because I thought there were more, and I was under the assumption there was more. And we went to that thing at the Public House, and we realized, "Wait a minute, there's no land on fifty." So I don't see, I'm not, I'm not convinced on how it's gonna benefit us.
No, there, there's two thoughts on that. Some people think, you know, Route fifteen is just ripe for the picking, and the planning, and the building. Then the other side, when you really look at it, there's not that much really available. I believe there's a lot of Army Corps engineers in, there are very few property owners there, and it's, it's tough, you know? I mean, we do want tax dollars that come in and everything to benefit us, but we do, we do have to get exact numbers on everything. So we will continue moving on it.
Well, and this is really also, so, and I hate to throw this in the mix, but this is about speed, too. He wants to open in the spring, he needs sewer. So I'll get you more information for the next meeting. But if reluctance continues, he's gonna have to do, his fallback is to tie in at Farquhar with just his own line, and that's gonna take it
It's a loss.
That's gonna really put a kibosh on getting sewer route down fifteen for a very long time.
Yeah, so we do have to, numbers in way everything, pros and cons.
Okay. One other thing, we do have a young lady that works for the library, who is going to sit in for Andrea while she's on leave. So she'll be here at the meeting on the, on the sixteenth, to start training, at least for the board of selectmen meetings.
Sounds good. And you'll be in the day, the baby's two days old.
Right after.
Yeah, that's good, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Any questions on the report? Okay, to continue on the agenda, we have a request to accept a donation in memory of William Grandone, made to the senior center. Leslie said they will be meeting with the family in the next couple of weeks to discuss plans on how to honor him. And the donation from accumulation of people is a total of $1,275. So is there a motion from someone to accept the donation?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, then, we have a recommendation for an appointment for a new tree warden, Jeff?
Yes, Anthony Crane has, we've interviewed him. He has an extensive experience in the tree industry, he's here this evening.
Okay, would you like to come down, please? The mic is for the television audience.
Anthony is very enthusiastic about being a tree warden. He interviewed well. We checked his references, the people he's worked with, all come back outstanding. So I think he'd be a great, great tree warden for us.
Okay, any questions? We do have his resume and everything. Looking it over, you do have quite a bit of experience.
Yeah.
I know, Stephen, with equipment.
Yep. Tom Chamberlain is a neighbor and a friend of mine, he was the one that approached me and thought that it might be a good idea. I kind of look forward to working with the community, so appreciate your opinion.
Okay, good. Any questions? Is the motion then?
So moved, to appoint Anthony Crane as tree warden? Effective immediately, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, ready to go.
At, um, do you want the salary?
Yes.
At an annual salary of $2,719, plus $50 per month for mileage costs.
Is there second?
Second. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jeff? See you in the morning.
Congratulations.
Welcome, thank you.
Sure you want it for 2,700 bucks?
It, it isn't for something rough you do, right?
Yeah, thank you.
That's right, those are bucks that you have a few more zeros someplace. Okay, then, um, there's a request to accept the resignation of Alexis St. Francis as a full-time emergency dispatcher. She-
Just getting a full-time job with the guard.
Full-time job, so, not blaming her at all. Okay, she's with the National Guard, so is there a motion then to-
So moved.
Is there second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 8, 5 to 0. Okay, then, next on the agenda is review of post cemetery signage.
Nope, we got to appoint her to a part-time dispatcher position.
Yeah, that's, that's right, got to be checked there. Okay, there's a request now to appoint Alexis St. Francis as a part-time dispatcher.
So moved.
Is there second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 8, 5 to 0. Okay, does everybody have their copy of the- -signage wording proposed by the historical commission? Barbara, could you?
Um, I'm putting out here, there's a slight change on these, and also a change is the quote from songs.
Thank you.
And my little walking tour. The change is the open alleys, sunrise and sunset. I didn't put that on first. So, um, to follow up what our meeting in May, our understanding was that we could have the gravestone rubbing, no leaning against the gravestones or standing on them, generally keep your dog on a leash and clean up after the dog, and don't hang anything on, you know, like flower baskets or anything like that, that people might do, no chemicals, solutions, and that for the third graders, there would be a waiver for them to do the gravestone rubbing. I haven't talked to Jim Fannin about, you know, designating stones that he thinks would be okay to, for them to do the gravestone rubbing, I'm going to wait and see if you approve of the sign. This, the specifications for the sign are on the quote, it'll be a 20 by 30 sign, black-
20 by 30.
And it would be black with the gold lettering, which is, you know, common to what the signage is, the wayfaring signs. They'll be on, on two posts. It's a quarter-inch aluminum, and that's, that includes installation also.
Well, there's two numbers here, Barbara, one number after the description of the sign says 319 each, and then below that, installation available at 115-
For both.
For both signs.
Yes.
So, that would be in addition to the 319?
Yes, so it's $638 for the signs and 115 for the installation.
Mm-hmm.
We have $1,000 that-
Okay, that was going to be my next question.
Yes, we have $1,000 that was allotted.
Any questions from the board? I just have a comment, Barbara, this, um, the last thing, any other activity may, may cause damage to this outdoor museum.
Right.
To me, that sounds strange. I wouldn't consider either cemeteries museum, I mean, in the strict sense of the word. Is there other wording we could use, historical site or something?
Sure.
Because museum, you have the idea like a living museum or a museum where you go in and you see things, and I'm sure people think that, you know, they have someone buried in the cemetery, they have someone buried at the museum. Just my thought.
Yeah, well, they are referred to as outdoor museums, but if, if you think that, you know, you like better outdoor site, that's what you said, that's fine.
Yeah, because I know, like, particularly north cemetery, I mean, there are some old ones, but then there are some really new ones, which, you know, aren't old enough to be in a museum, but just my thought, it just-
No, that makes sense, why not just cemeteries or an old burial ground and other cemeteries?
Well, I think she's trying, I, she's trying to make it more, I, I believe, and I'm not speaking for her, but I, I get the opinion Barbara's trying to make it more of something unique to, that bodes respect, am I right?
Right.
I mean, that's how I believe you're thinking of it, right?
But even, even where it says any other activity, I was thinking that would also include, you know, riding bikes or getting your dirt bike down there, or taking your ATV down there, other than, you know, what's already listed here, any activity that's going to have the possibility of damaging something.
Well, if somebody riding a bike wouldn't really work too well in the old burial ground, but certainly on the north-
These kids ride everywhere, but I mean, I just, it's, it could be me, the board may vote, fine, but I just think outdoor, outdoor museum wasn't quite appropriate for cemetery.
I would agree, I would agree with that, so, you know, we don't visit our loved ones in a museum, you know, because as Mary pointed out, the old burial ground is, is one area, but other cemeteries have our family members in them, you know, and it, I don't think we consider it a museum.
I think when they say museum, is that it marks time, it marks things that, you know, have happened in the past, in time, and that people do go to cemeteries to learn things, you know, they learn about their ancestors, they learn about what's written, they learn about the images on the stones, so, and that's all, especially in the old burial ground, it's all historical, so that's, that's why I put museum, because it is referred, they are referred to.
I understand that point, but I just thought they were words, you know, just, any other activity they may, that may cause damage-
To the old burial ground.
Because we're putting one at north to-
It's a historic cemetery, so you could use, rather than outdoor museum, could use the word historic cemetery, and that, to me, is something that everybody should respect.
Right. Historic cemetery sounds better than museum.
I mean, if that pleases the chairman-
Want historic cemetery?
Instead of outdoor museum?
Sure.
Just a suggestion, so that we can move on.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea, just-
Historic.
Could have only been me, but it's-
Cemetery, okay.
And this is brochure is-
I put that together a few years ago.
It's very-
It's very well done.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion then to see if it's going to have Sturbridge Board of Selectmen on it, to approve the proposal, the sign with the amendment from Mike?
I'll make a motion that we, we, the Board of Selectmen approve the signs at North Cemetery and the old burial ground with the, with the change that outdoor museum be changed to the words historic cemetery.
Okay, I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor? 8, 5 to 0. Okay, thank Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, here is the request for concurrence. Scratched off the wrong thing. Yes, of the appointments? Jeff, you want to?
I've been approached by Mr. Blanchard, who expressed interest in being on the Historical Commission, and I see no reason he wouldn't be an outstanding member and recommend his appointment.
There was also a letter from him in the packet. Any questions? Comments?
I'd be happy to be applied to that.
Yeah, well, he was on it years ago, too, before he became a selectman, because you could do both.
Yeah, I, I do, I do think he would be a good member of the Historic Commission, because he, you know, he, he's expressed interest in the history of the, you know, town, and we, you know, we need people that are advocates, so, and I think, I think Charlie is an advocate for, you know, the history and the preservation of the history of Sturbridge.
I would agree with that.
Anybody want to make a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 8, 5 to 0. Okay, there's a request to accept a donation from Quayview Construction of $500 for the cost of national night out. Police chief forwarded this to us. Okay, any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, then, this request authorizing the Conservation Commission to tentatively agree to hold a conservation restriction on a parcel of land owned by James Misselitz of Florida, as requested by the Opacum Land Trust. Information in the packet. Then, a motion, right, Jeff?
There is, and Mr. Hood's here this evening to answer any questions representing the Opacum Land Trust.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question, that this parcel will be, may be used for a commercial forestry program in the future.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, this, I, I think in the, the Conservation Commission taking on a, a, a conservation restriction and, and the responsibility for enforcing it, I think that has some, some value. I mean, for example, when the town purchased the Plimpton property, we paid approximately $10,000 to have, to Opacum for the conservation restriction, so I think there's value added if the town accept, you know, accepts the, or if the Conservation Commission accepts it. So, I would suggest that we should, the Board of Selectmen should request that, that a contribution to the Conservation Fund be made as part of the, the whole acceptance of the, the conservation restriction by the Conservation Commission. Maybe $10,000 or something, whatever the, it's not really up to the Board of Selectmen to determine the amount, it would be the, the town administrator's responsibility to, to determine that, but I would suggest that it may be appropriate that the town ask for a contribution to the Conservation Fund in the process of accepting this restriction.
Okay, how's that sound?
Uh, that would be unusual, you know, the, the funding for this is to allow the landowner to maintain their property in conservation and for active forestry, so that, and they're agreeing to sell the conservation restriction at 75% of its value, so they're selling their development rights for less than full price, they're donating 25%, and the intent of the program is to keep the land from being converted from forestry, you know, in perpetuity, so it can be, continue to be a working forest, can continue to support wildlife and habitat, you know, and it's too, I understand your point about adding that, but that would be, you know, where would that funding come from, you know, as it is, Opacum receives nothing from this, we're doing it to assist the landowner in their conservation efforts, so.
But, um, yeah, how mu, what's, you know, 75% of what is, is the-
There'll be appraisal, if the, if the-
How much, how much is it if it gets approved? What are we talking about for the value of that?
What will happen is if the application is approved, the Forest Service will actually do an appraisal with a third-party real estate appraiser to come up with the value of the land and the value of the land with, out, with and without the conservation easement, so the price at that point will be determined, at which point the Forest Service will make an offer to the landowner to see if they wish to proceed, and if they do, then they will do a survey of the property and make an offer at that time.
Jeff, your thoughts?
I had not thought about consideration. I know the goal of this community overall has been to preserve, you know, open environmental areas. I thought this was an opportunity to, again, gain another, conserve parcel without any expense to the town other than through some enforcement, which may or may not have an impact down the road. So, overall, it achieves many of our goals when it comes to conserve land, but it may have some cost down the road.
But if it does, that, that cost would come out of the taxpayers.
Well, again, I don't know the forestry element, whether he's going to get a forestry permit from the town, and whether or not there are oversight dollars associated with that, I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
But the, the town's assuming the liability of enforcement in accepting the-
Yes, and the owner will still own the property, this won't be public property, it'll be a private parcel.
But that, that liability is worth something, normally.
It depends on where you're, where you are, it, some people may see it, I, and that's fine, if the board sees a consideration necessary, I can work with Opacum to see how that would work.
I'm, I'm all, all in favor of it, and the owner of the property is most likely going to receive something in the hundreds of thousands, several hundreds of thousands of dollars for the development rights, and for a very, very, very small percentage of that, if the town takes on that liability, so that in the future, the taxpayers of the town, if something happens, don't have to take money to pay to enforce the restriction.
Right, I, I understand, down the road, there may be a cost, but if this parcel came up for sale, would the town consider buying it themselves for preservation, or would we let this go to a private entity? And what's the flipside value of someone else? And what's the flipside value of someone else buying it and putting a restriction on it for us? I don't know. I've not looked at it from that perspective.
Would you want to take this under consideration until our next meeting, until we get a little more in-depth?
Well, I believe, this is the other thing about it. I believe the application has to be in by the 10th of September or something like that.
Actually, the 9th, yeah. End of the day on the 9th, so.
That's, that's why we can't really.
Hold off, okay.
Hold off, but.
And I will also say that what, what the Conservation Commission is agreeing to at this point is to agree to the application process.
Yeah.
At which time, if the project moves forward, the selectmen will actually have to sign off, be part of the negotiation, sign off. So there'll be a separate phase where you can deliberate on, on, on issues such as.
My issue, I just wanted to be upfront about it because I'm in favor of going ahead with it at this point. But I just want to be upfront and say, I think the restriction's worth something. And I think the town should get a contribution to the Conservation Fund as, as a result of accepting the restriction. That's my point of view.
Does somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that.
Well, there's, there's a good one written.
Oh, yeah. Ooh, where did I do this?
It's, it's on top here.
Okay, thank you.
Down at the bottom.
At the bottom. I'll make a motion to agree in principle and express support for the Conservation Commission holding the conservation restriction on the Miskowitz's property as requested by the Opakam Land Trust contingent of, of a final conservation restriction that is acceptable to the town. You already know what one of my acceptables is.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have community compact, compact grant, sorry, vendor selection. Okay, Jeff and Kevin's here.
Yeah, I'll let Kevin, he'll check, review this with you.
Good evening, Selectmen.
Evening.
So, as I have noted in a couple of my past meetings here, we were awarded the community, the Commonwealth Community Compact to conduct an economic development self-assessment and to develop an economic development strategy. I solicited quotes for that project. I solicited from four different companies who had expressed interest previously. I received two responses, and per Mass General Law, I selected the lowest bid, which was McCabe Enterprises. And there, for, I have provided for you their bid or their, their quote. And I am recommending that they be accepted and that you allow Jeff and I, or sorry, the town administrator and I to, to enter into a contract with them to begin work immediately.
Okay, is there any question on the quote?
No, I just have a question on, to the town administrator, maybe. I'm not sure either exactly what they're going to, what are we looking for them to do?
Right. I think Kevin should.
Yeah, so again, what they're going to do is they're going to look at our, our economy and, you know, our basic economic development as it sits right now and say, this is where you are, this is kind of a, a report card, a health checkup, if you will, on how your economy's doing. And it's going to compare it against five other like communities in the Commonwealth. Then it will give us a strategy to grow our economy over the next few years. That's kind of the two-cent elevator pitch for it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Someone willing to make the motion then?
I'll make a motion to offer the bid for the 2019 Commonwealth Community Compact to McCabe Enterprises and to permit the town administrator, economic development, and tourism coordinator to negotiate a contract for McCabe to complete said work by June 30th, 2020 at the quoted amount of $23,989.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Next, we have a request for a letter of support from Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission for their application to create the Southern Worcester County Economic Development Organization. Does anyone have any questions on it?
Jeff? We have a reservation. I think this is something, if you do wish to support this. Time on task, CMRPC covers a lot of ground now. So if this does happen, we want to make sure that sufficient resources and people are dedicated to the issue. And it does serve regionally, not just focused on one or two communities. So those would be our concerns with CMRPC taking this on themselves.
Comments from the board?
My understanding, talking to CMRPC, they will have approximately three to four staff members at work on this. It won't be their exclusive, one of them will be their exclusive position, but the other three will, will be part of their job to work on this issue.
Mary?
With those reservations about adequate time spent on other duties, do you think this is good for Sturbridge to support, in your opinion? Is it in our best interest? Guess that's a million-dollar question from our end, right?
I, I would agree with, with the town administrator. Right now, CMRPC has been expanding and adding a lot of positions. However, as he said, they're doing a lot of different tasks. And this project is going to involve, you know, there are 39 town catchmen, so it's going to be a lot of work. And this is a brand-new entity, this economic development organization. So that one full-time person is going to have to build an entire organization, plus the three part-time people. There's a lot of question marks as to whether or not there is enough staffing time to make it an effective organization. That's, I agree with his reservations. That's, that's my reservation on this as well. And given some of the challenges we've seen previously with CMRPC, I would, I would be hesitant.
Yeah.
Mike?
Well, you know, the, I like where they're going, but I think what we really need in Southern Worcester County is, is a development corporation like they have in Western Massachusetts, West Mass area development corporation, which actually, you know, goes in there, does the EDA grants, applies for them, they're the, they manage the projects, get them done. I don't know if this organization can, is, you know, has enough oomph to do that. I mean, it, it looks good, and I think the, the thinking is in the right direction. But I, I would favor a separate entity that can, can actually get things done.
If I may, you know, I was part of the SEDS strategy group that helped to pull the SEDS together. And, you know, like you said, Selectmen, CMRPC does, they do a lot of work, and they do a lot of good work, don't get me wrong. But to have a dedicated organization to focus on the economic development in our area, especially since Worcester is part of that catchment, you really need to have someone, or many people who are, whose full-time focus is on that growth and development. Because we have a lot going on in this, in Southern Worcester County that really needs dedicated focus in the field of economic development.
What are, Mary, do you know what the other communities are, what their position is? Anybody?
No man.
Talk to anybody else. Are we going to be like the one town holding out, so there's repercussions that way too? Are like communities generally supportive?
I wouldn't think so. Plus, but it does sound like, you know, with the questions and the reservations, it does sound like the board would prefer passing.
We also serve, I mean, between the two of us here, we serve on two different committees under CMRPC. We, I know, we're very much involved in CMRPC, so if this is, one thing is not supported. You still are, are very active in the organization.
So is there a motion then to support or to pass on it?
Pass.
Well, I was going to say table it. Can we get, they're after a timeline?
Well, they actually preferred their letters by what?
A week ago.
Too many unanswered questions about the amount of support it's going to have.
And I think.
Manpower, basically.
I think if you, I don't, I would, if you're not sure you want to do it, don't take any action. And my response to them would be, it was just something we, we had too many questions on. And there wasn't time to get them answered before the letter of support. But we would encourage CMRPC to give us the information or come visit about the organization.
I like that approach.
Make a motion for no action? Do you want a motion for no action?
Well, Jeff said just.
Don't, just let it die?
Just let them know.
But I'll let them know that it wasn't because we're not supportive, it's just because there were too many unanswered questions and would like to hear more about it.
Which is accurate.
That sounds good.
Yes.
I, I have some unanswered questions about, you know, follow-through, for example. Oh, yeah, you identify an economic development district. Well, what are you going to do about it? You want, you want projects there that will create jobs and so forth. And I don't think this entity has the capability of, you know, undertaking, you know, a, you know, multimillion-dollar EDA grant or something like that. I, I don't think, I don't know if CMRPC has ever done anything like that. And it takes, you know, expertise and, and the right, you know, the right people managing those types of projects. I don't, I see this just going for a step and not, not getting the follow-through that we need. Although I could be wrong.
We'll put on hold anyway.
Okay. Okay, so we're up to old business. Thank you again, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. Old business?
Yes.
Okay, we're back on the host community agreement policy. And at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, there were a couple of questions raised regarding onsite consumption. If somehow the regulations are amended to provide for onsite consumption, and how's that relate to our bylaw? According to our town council, it would still be prohibited under our bylaw unless it was, our bylaw was amended. And then the second question was about the delivery of product. There are proposed regulations, according to Nicole Castanza, our attorney, that would provide for delivery only, only retailers. And under the, our retailer's definition in our bylaw, if the state was to permit delivery-only retailers, our bylaw would accept that as a retailer. So we could have delivery only in town if the state allowed that kind of business. We don't allow drive-throughs. That's, that's in our bylaw. You can't have that. And we can't prohibit a delivery-only or another retailer in town from delivering to someone in Sturbridge. So I think to answer those questions, right now, delivery-only is not allowed in Sturbridge because the state law doesn't allow it. And onsite consumption isn't allowed because neither the state law or Sturbridge bylaw allows it. And both can be covered in host community agreements with any retailer we engage.
I just had a question. I was just playing devil's advocate because you know how this starts and it, and it spiders out?
Oh, yeah.
And it's going to sound crazy, but you know how you can call Grubhub for delivery of different foods? If it's, if it's a retailer delivery only, this, am I correct in understanding that you need to call, let's say it's X Delivery Company, that you can only call them to deliver the marijuana? You cannot call like Uber to pick up a delivery at that place to pick up?
I don't know because the regulations aren't provided.
Right now, they don't allow it.
Okay. That, I thought that's why you were going to say that, but I just wanted to put it out there because it could happen.
And, and truth be told, they do keep changing everything.
They do, I know.
And if they did have to come to allow delivery only, another question is, would that, well, it, it could be years from now until that happened, but assuming it happens sooner rather than later, can delivery-only facilities satisfy our requirement to issue two licenses? In other words, could what, one license be a delivery-only license?
It would still be considered a retailer. So our licenses are for retailers.
So it could maybe not be allowed if we only allow two, let's say we only allow two, then.
Right.
That's a different question, but what I'm saying is, could you have a delivery-only facility in the future if that's what the regulations allow? Which is a different question.
Well, you're looking at two different portions of the regulations. Our regulation says we have two retailers, and a delivery-only would still be classified as a retailer.
I get it. That's why I'm saying.
So you can't have more than two.
Right. What I'm saying is, I know by regulation right now it's not allowed, but let's assume in the future it was. Could a delivery-only facility satisfy our requirement to have two retail licenses, which is a separate thing?
Yes.
Okay. I hear, I see where you're going.
See what I'm saying? We could have
I do.
A retailer that you go to the premises and purchase.
And add delivery.
And a different place that is delivery only, which would have a different traffic impact, for example, possibly. So, but the regulations don't allow it right now anyway, so that's kind of a hypothetical.
But it's a good, I mean, these questions come out.
Yeah.
So those were the questions from the last meeting. I think we need to kind of get started on the negotiations, so I would request.
Mary?
I have a question. It seems like when we've been discussing this, we've had representatives from three applicants, it looks like, sitting and, and taking it all in. Is the fourth applicant, which I have not seen, the one interested in the Fisk Hill Plaza location, is that applicant still interested?
I believe so.
Okay. I mean, they're not required to come. I was just curious because we haven't seen them since the initial, at least I haven't, since the initial discussion.
Somebody here the last time, I'm not sure.
Oh, really?
I, I don't quote me on it. I'm not sure.
They came though, they were all invited to give presentations.
Yes, and they are, and so all four are still on the table.
Still requesting. Okay, so Jeff, you were saying?
If we could, go ahead and adopt the policy, and then we can get started.
Yes. Were there any other questions after reading the policy again?
I just wanted to reiterate a thing that I was interested in. On one of them, it says of interest to the town. We have a whole like bullet thing. I'm trying to find it. Oh, here it is.
What page?
Is that 146?
146.
Yeah.
Proposed benefits, and we have, well, they're not bullets, it's A, B, C, D. And I had talked about not being able to assign or transfer the host agreement in the event that they sell the business. In other words, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but
I agree.
that would be an opportunity to renegotiate a host agreement with the.
Oh, without question. That was going to be in there no matter what.
Oh, okay. I didn't, it, it wasn't like non-assignability, non-transferability, so I just.
The legalese, we kind of left out of it.
Okay.
Because it was a given, kind of like a, you know, most favorite nation clause, those type of things.
And this, I'm assuming the same thing with the, if the money they're giving us does not cover our impact costs, that there'd be a condition, that will go in the agreement, I'm assuming?
Yes, that we have a reopener for unanticipated impacts.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. And the policy, we already ran it by council and.
They wrote it.
They wrote it? Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you wrote it or. Okay.
Okay, then, is there a motion then to approve marijuana host? Okay, then, is there a motion then to approve marijuana host community agreement policy?
So moved.
Your second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we can move.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, that was Jeff's old business. Priscilla?
Uh, first, I, I wanna thank Andrea for doing the, um, end of section. Thank you for that, that helps. Um, and also, I know we talked about triple E in the beginning. I'm assuming, or I'm gonna ask, I know that people can call individually and get their, their property sprayed. Um, I had a few, quite a few residents who asked me over the weekend about, has the town of Sturbridge sprayed as a community, as they see on TV, town A, B, C, D has sprayed, and they asked if we have sprayed. So I thought, since it's an open session, perhaps we could answer it that way.
We have not, 'cause we're part of that collaborative, and they do the spraying, and they were in last week. Um, the aerial spraying is kinda controlled by the state.
Yeah.
And they don't anticipate doing any aerial spraying, um, 'cause 50% of the people want aerial spraying and 50%, you know.
Yeah, 50 don't, right.
And, uh, unless it gets worse.
Right.
Unless there are more and more cases found.
I told people to go onsite and call in for their area if they wanted their homes and whatever done.
Right.
To do it, 'cause I know we did it, uh, back in May.
Right.
And, um, I told them that they would come out and do it, and it's no cost, so at least I've given that information, but thank you for that.
Yeah, because we have for several years now, belong to the central mass mosquito control.
And it's great, 'cause it's free.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what I tell people.
It's not really free, the town pays to join.
That's okay. It's, it's, they don't have to pay out of pocket, they pay, they pay another way.
Yeah, it's in the general fund.
Through their tax base.
Yeah. Okay, any other old business?
No, that's it.
Chase?
I have no old, but I would just like to commend the three applicants that have come to the meeting every time. You guys have sat through the meeting, and, you know, I think Sturbridge is in good hands with folks like you wanting to be here.
They enjoy the meetings, right?
They're not gonna say otherwise.
At this point. Okay, Mike?
Uh, at the last meeting, I brought up, um, a, I mentioned Stanton, uh, Stanton Grant, which is for dog park. They, the foundation had, gives out, uh, $250,000 grants, uh, for dog parks, and, but there needs to be a lead town employee that's the contact person, and I'd like to ask the town administrator, with the pleasure of the board, to see if there's anyone, any town employee that would like to take the lead on, on, uh, a dog park, and then we could look into the grant program, or that person could look into the grant program and so forth. I'd like to ask the town administrator if he.
I'll have an answer for you next meeting.
If there's anybody, anybody that works for the town, that's interesting.
I, I believe we have several.
I'm sure there would be, knowing the departments.
But they only accept one.
Well, that's okay.
They don't want to talk to 20 people, they want one, one town employee as their contact person. But it is a very good program.
Okay. Other old?
I'm all old and out.
No. Okay, um, my old, did we ever hear from the ABCC on the question about Altrust? If they could have a one-day legal license on property they don't own?
Yes, they have to, whether or not they own it or not.
Wait a minute, they, they have to what?
They have to have a license for.
Oh, I know they have to have a license, but can they?
And it doesn't matter if they own it or not.
Oh, so they can have a license. Okay. And then the, um, did we get a letter from the property owner?
Yes.
Proving it. Okay, and did they speak to the police department?
Yes, they have details set up for the day of their event, which I believe is this weekend.
Yeah, the eighth, whatever day that is.
Wow, that's gonna be nasty on that part of town.
I'm not going that far. Stayed over here.
I'll never, I'll never make it home.
You better go home and stay home.
That's all I have.
Yeah, don't leave home.
Okay, new business, Priscilla?
No.
Chase, Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. Um, correspondence, Mike?
Um, we have correspondence from Charter Communications dated August 19th regarding upcoming changes. Essentially, uh, the Atlantic Coast Conference, uh, network will launch in high definition on channel 338. The second piece of correspondence is dated August 20th, and it's also, uh, describing upcoming changes, and it's NBA League Pass pay-per-view, uh, uh, in the channel, channel lineups will be changing, so. Uh, and the third co- correspondence we have is also from Charter Communications, and that's requi- regarding lineup changes, which will be, um, uh, on or around, uh, wow, I guess it already happened, they said August 8th, and they sent out the letter on the 19th, but, uh, NBC affiliate
Good old Charter.
Will be included in basic, uh, charter, uh, service or spectrum service, and, uh, a couple other NBC stations, uh, WBTS, W B, W Y C N, uh, will, the cha- channel lineups will now serve Sturbridge.
Okay, does anybody else have any other? Um, I did get this letter, I'll have, um, Andrea make a copy for you. It's from a Division One Young Marine Unit of the Year person. It's about a red ribbon week, um, support ridding communities of illicit drug uses, and they would like a petition signed by us, but, um, it is until October 23rd to the 31st, so if I give Andrea this, she can give you all a copy, and we can probably make a motion at our next meeting to support it. And then, did you people get this other
Yeah.
Report what?
Yes.
What?
I couldn't read it.
Oh, yeah.
Which one?
Yeah, I looked through that, that, is that, is that person really seven years old?
I don't know.
Oh, that, that, oh, yeah, that, yeah.
I mean, that is amazing.
Yeah.
The thought process that he put in for, to the whole thing.
Future MIT protege, oh, no.
Did you see that?
I don't know where mine, mine must be at home. Well, I couldn't read it, but the way he describes himself.
But in the letter, it says something about seven years and been.
I didn't pick up that he was seven.
No, no.
So I didn't, I didn't know how old this person was, but I didn't think.
No, he.
No, he's been associated for 22 years.
Road slash traffic.
Not seven.
Safety businessman of New York State and USA for seven years.
And he's been associated with the Ballston Spa for 22 years.
Oh, so, it's not so amazing.
It was a puzzle. It's him writing like seven, but.
Yeah, it was, and he's got Massachusetts mixed up with New Jersey, too.
I know.
Yeah, and, uh,
Well, it was.
And, and the, uh, signal stuff would never fly with Mass, D O two T.
Okay, no other correspondence. Okay, approval of minutes of August 19th.
I have just two changes.
Okay.
Um, page four, um, on the, um, Barbara Berry, that paragraph, Vice Chair Dowling stated it would be good to know sooner about employees have taken more work on, so they could possibly be compensated more and add or otherwise addressed in an appropriate way. And then rather, and the board would have the oppo, so, press O and input so, the board would have the opportunity to be more proactive. So you're adding or otherwise addressed in an appropriate way. And then the only other one was, um, on the top of page six, Vice Chair Dowling asked about the status of the job classification insert study approved at town meeting.
Okay, and Andrea, I did mention to you on that executive session, the voice vote needs to be spelt out. Also, on, um, page three, that last paragraph, third line down, begins meeting with Army Corps, again, spell check, Corps there is C O R P.
Page three, is it?
Yes.
Me, yeah.
Town administrator.
Yeah, the E is a P.
Yeah, they put the apple core.
Yeah.
Happens all the time.
Yeah, the spell check is.
I know.
Yeah, that could've done it.
Also, the third line up from the bottom, um, still under town administrator's report, where it says he spoke about the campground owner, we should definitely put in what campground it is, Pine Lake. So, if people read it, they understand it.
Spell check?
Okay.
Pine Lake RV.
Yep. Okay, that's all I have. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, citizens forum. Okay, could you come up to one of the mics, please? Good evening. Could you please give your name for the record?
I would be happy to do so, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you for hearing me during this forum. I would like to thank our town administrator, and I would also like to thank each of you select persons, and I am very grateful to be here. Now, when I first called for this appointment.
Oops, you named me first.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Eleanor Beverly Williams, but I'd be, my given name is Beverly, so if you could want to, you can call me either Beverly or Mrs. Williams, in either case.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, my concern here, and for being here, is about the communication systems that we have in the town. And when it comes to Spectrum and Charter, which is all under a big branch, as we know, and that branch is, uh, the, um, don't mind me, I'm tired, it's been a long day. I'm sure it has been for all of you. Uh, let me see. Time Warner, that's it, Time Warner. They're all under Time Warner, which is a big spread. Now, we have a lot of people that are seniors, and not only seniors, but young mothers and that are self-supporting and raising children, and we have problems with these things, with the cost of the communications that are coming into town. Now, in the, I would like to make a full disclosure before I begin anything else. I personally have had my TV disconnected, taken everything taken out, because I personally cannot afford it, but I want you to know that. But I also want you to know, I'm not here to try to put Spectrum out of business. I am here to try to find a reasonable solution to the problems of the high payments, and how do we get away from that? We have no choices. All you can do is Verizon will give you telephone, and they will be able to give you, uh, your, your internet. They can't give you television. The only one that can give us television is Spectrum. And they get you in with these offers, and they start, but the offers only last for one year. People who already have their products cannot buy into that new offer. You can't get, in other words, you can't get the reduced price that the new people that are, they're trying to get in can get. Now, I have met Mr. Supernat, because his mother happens to be, uh, a member of the same, um, daycare program that I go to, Summit, that's how we met, we've never had any discussions about anything in between, I want that to be clear. Also, I have many people who have been trying to talk to me and say, I don't know anything about politics, other than what I read, and I do read a lot about politics. But as far as town government is concerned, I don't know a lot. But I do vote, and as many of the others do. And there's a couple of things that people have been especially, um, upset about. One of them being, the fact that you have one, one person, how does this person get to come into this town? Is it a bidding system? I don't know. Is it?
It was originally, yes.
What is it now?
Um, well, now we, um, either renew or not, but the problem is that no other provider is going to come in, because they would have to buy all the poles and all the equipment from Charter.
It's a monopoly, is what it is.
There's a way out, though.
It's very sad.
There is a way out.
It's very sad, and, and it's the thing that most of us are most upset about, the fact that we have no choices. I mean, yes, we can, uh, get the, and, and put it on and be screen, screen, you know, whatever you call it, streaming from other things, you know, if we, and that's a very small fee to do, if you wanna do that. But most people my age are not gonna be trying to figure these things out. It's very difficult. And young mothers who have children that are, you know, that can't afford to be doing this. So, I don't know personally, I just don't know what to do about this. I figured I would come here, I had many people that wanted to come with me, and I said, no, it doesn't make sense for a whole bunch of people to go storming, excuse me, into a, a meeting, because you got hot collar. That doesn't matter, that doesn't do any sense to anybody, it doesn't do any good for anybody. So I thought I would come to you people and ask for some reasonable solutions to maybe we can work on, for the people in this town and the seniors in this town. And I don't know what we can do, but we've got to do something. I mean, in all fairness, like I said, in full disclosure, I did try to work with Spectrum. They were kind, they were very nice, I'm not saying that they were not, but it doesn't change the fact that people can't afford what they've got.
I agree.
They did give me, uh, uh, for three months, they gave me what they called a seasonal rate. Now, that was very nice of them, they did not have to do that, and I appreciated that. But a seasonal rate is like 50 something dollars. That I could afford, now I don't expect them to give it to me for $50 every month, because, you know, you can't do that. It's a business, and I understand that also. But when you're coming to, when you're coming into a, a town, and you know that people can do nothing, nothing, but accept you, there's got to be some way to, to have something else, whether it be a bidding process, where other people may want to bid, or a voting process, where we can vote people, and there's gotta be something that we can do to change the situation that we don't have any choices.
Well, we would have to look, we just renewed the contract, what, two years ago, was it?
Yeah, so what, does it run for five years?
At least.
At least, I think it's probably even longer, but.
I hope not.
But when we get, um, when we get complaints, you know, Charter has been amenable to coming in and discussing things.
Well, yes, they do, because they know, what are you gonna do?
Well, I know, but if we can, you know, have our town administrator get in touch with them and express your thoughts.
Well, it's not just my thoughts, I got a whole lot of people who want to come with me.
No, I know the same thoughts a lot of other people have.
Yes.
And, um, see if there's anything that can be done. But, like I say, other, now, Grimfield, they have Charter, Spectrum.
I don't know, but.
They were.
Didn't Verizon say at one time, we tried Verizon, and they said that they didn't have enough business here. They didn't see it as viable enough.
Well, it wouldn't be viable, 'cause it.
It's not offered.
Right now, 'cause it's not offered.
Correct.
There's nothing else that's offered.
Correct.
Well, they can't make money on just their internet and their telephone.
I hear you, I hear you. Mrs. Williams, is that what it, Mrs. Williams? Um, I too have faced the same thing with Charter. I got tired of paying every month more and more and more, and last January, I cut the cord. And I did do Roku, and it's very, very simple, I can tell you this, I can.
That's the streaming.
It, it is, but it's also live streaming, it's not, people, you know, at one time, I also thought it was yesterday's news that I'm gonna hear today, but it isn't. And I pay, you can, you can take a choice. There are some that are $19.99 a month, there's some that are $50 a month, and that's it. That's it. But, um, in some cases, you have to have an internet provider, but if you're only having an internet provider for that, you get it at a lesser fee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it dropped my bill by $70 a month.
It's amazing.
It is amazing, but I'm so glad to be rid of it.
I mean, like I said, if they can give you a $50 deduction for your, you know.
I agree. And then you pay for your equipment, you have to pay for the box, you have to pay for everything.
And not only that, but they change things, they're always changing.
And they don't do anything for seniors, because.
No, they don't.
I had called on behalf of other seniors that live at the mobile park, I had called on their behalf at one time, and I explained how many people, and their bottom line was, um, well, we would give you a small percentage off of the month. The bottom line was, it came to like five bucks a month.
Nothing, yeah, it was nothing.
Which is nothing, okay? They did nothing, and offered nothing. So I, I understand what you're saying, and as many people as you have, I can tell you, I can pull you another 30 from there, easy.
Oh, I know, I'm. Oh, I know, I, I know, I just, people coming up to me, because when someone said something about a program that was on, and I said, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, I had my television disconnected, my television stuck.
And that's not right, that's not right.
And they looked at me, and they said, you don't have tele-? I says, no, I says, I can't afford those fees. Mine has passed away last year, so I, my income, I went, chum, naturally.
It's not right that you have to make that choice, can we do...
Well, I was just going to ask, Jeff, can you speak to our, um, oh, gosh, the name?
Our count rep?
No, well, that too, but in the, works with the AV...
Oh, yes, 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 yeah, Bruce.
Bruce, no. Can you speak to Bruce, and, you know, he works for the town, he doesn't work for the, um, Spectrum or anything?
Oh, I can, I have communication with him.
Yeah, and see if he could take the time to maybe look up some of these suggestions, and then, you know, if there are enough suggestions, if they're, you know, worthwhile, we can get information out to the residents on it, but we are stuck with the provider we have.
Lauren, it was not, what about, uh, the Robo situation?
Well, no, that's what...
Get Robo to come in here.
No, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, Roku, um, that's okay. Maybe we can, maybe somehow we can work some kind of, something out, I don't know, I'm just making, just talking, we're just sharing ideas. A person could have their own business, just looking up seniors to these things.
Well, I think we can maybe get the high school students, maybe, we can tie into them, and maybe they would do it as a, as like a community service.
Yeah.
You know, they all need to do community service, and maybe we can set a date and say, okay, on this day, they're going to be in this part of town, and this day in that part of town. I mean, these are just thoughts going out. The Roku, perhaps we could work something out where some, you can buy a very basic one for like thirty-nine dollars, and that's really all you need, and then work with Charter to provide the internet service with the lowest speeds per minute, you don't need the highest.
We can get internet from Verizon, we can get internet from Verizon, we can get a phone from Verizon.
Correct.
But we can't get...
Get the TV.
The TV.
But, you know, I will tell you this, the prices are not going to be a whole heck of a lot different, they're really not. They're going to start, the prices from Verizon for TV, it's not going to be much different than Charter, I know people who have had it, I know people who had DirecTV with the satellites.
They always give you a good price when you're coming in.
Not the same, that's it, that's all it lasts is, uh, one year, and that's it.
And within the next year, everything has turned upside down, they're taking away some of these people's programs that they really watch, they, and like myself, I only had Basic, that's all I had, was the Basic.
Right.
I, I didn't have one movie channel, I didn't have any of them.
And Basic is expensive enough.
Yeah, and, and even when you can't swing that with your, your internet and, and your telephones, it just can't do it.
Well, if we can get some information on what could possibly be out there, then, you know, we can inform people.
Because these people are telling me, I'll do the, you know, we'll, you know, we'll go up there with you, I, I don't want anybody coming up here with us, I, we want to talk about it.
Well, the thing is, we're, we're, we're well aware, because these are things we've been hearing for years, ever since the cable first went in.
Yeah. And when we renegotiate the contract, it's not, we tried hard to be as pro-residence as we could, but our choice was, you can renew with Spectrum, or don't renew with them at all.
Well, this is what I'm saying.
No, I know, but it would, but, 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 but it's not up to, because people will say, oh, FiOS is so much better. If you live in a suburban town close to the city, it behooves others to come in and, and pay for the wires and give residents choices, but that's kind of governed by the market, we don't, we can't tell them, come in unless they, it's economically viable for them to do it.
That's, that's true, that's true.
So our choice was Spectrum or nothing.
I understand.
And, but, yeah, so, I mean, we feel the same way, we're paying, we're all of different means, but everybody's bill is very high.
Outrageous.
Yeah, well, the thing, like I said, is with, with us, and they're telling me, well, we can, we'll fill out all these papers and sign them and all, all this kind of stuff, I'm not looking to go around with papers for everybody to sign, I'm not trying to start a war, I just want somebody to be reasonable.
No, I, you know, people sign things because, you know, they feel very strongly about things, but...
Yes, I know.
Signing something in this case, um, we're well aware of the feelings and the problems, and, you know, we'll have to see what we possibly can do about it, but right now, it's Charter or nothing.
Yeah, I understand, but like I said, maybe if we could get them, because like I said, they are under the, a big wing, they really are. And, uh, if we could even get them to give a cou- make up a couple of programs for seniors, where they could have a movie channel, I mean, not fifteen movie channels, but something to watch.
Yeah.
Where they could have their news that they could watch.
Well, our town administrator will talk to the rep from...
I mean, we're not asking for the world.
Right.
We'd just like to be able to be like everybody else, and be able to sit down in the evening and watch a program. I can watch movies, I, I could watch movies that happened thirty-five years ago, that's, that's always on the floor, thirty-five years ago.
I know what you mean.
But I can't watch any of the newer movies, no, don't bother, dear, I do that all day, it's just a habit, it just gets knocked over, because my hands are always going and my mouth is always going, so, between the two of them, but in all seriousness.
So, so we will do what we can, okay?
Okay, I know.
As we've always tried, but...
I know, we understand.
Yeah, oh, no, no.
I'm just saying, even if they could set up programs where they would have something that the seniors could pick from, at least a Basic. And, you know, one, on one movie channel and Basic and one...
A different package, a minimal package.
Yeah, some, a different package, that would be something that they could work on.
And not use it every three months.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable.
You know, for, for families, you know, this is why it's difficult for, for elderly and stuff, but, but for a family, uh, the Spectrum has, you can have, you can stream up to five devices at one time, uh, so you can...
I wouldn't even know, because I don't know even how to stream, I don't, I wouldn't know any of that stuff.
Well, it's the same thing, it's, it's, it's basically the same thing as, uh, watching TV, I can watch any, uh, any of the Spectrum Charter channels anywhere I go, I can, I could be in California, and I can watch Nessun right on my cell phone, because...
You also have an iPhone, no you're not.
Because it, you know, it streams.
Do you have an iPhone?
Uh, no, I've got a...
Most people do.
An Android, but it doesn't...
I have a flip, I have a flip phone, I mean, that's what I have.
Well, the flip phone, but...
I get my calls.
It works, it works.
But if you have, uh, if you have a smart TV, or if you have a, you know, if, if there's somebody else in your family that has Spectrum, you might be, in your immediate family, you might be able to get set up to, to watch one of those five devices that they allow, um, you know, that's...
Well, I know, one more thing before I leave.
And your TV, uh, and they have, uh, boxes, uh, if you don't have a smart TV, that, that it would work, uh, anyhow.
Well, thank you.
So there's a lot of things that can be done to help save money. Unfortunately, they're geared to a family of five or something like that, they're not...
Well, I have one more thing that really wasn't on the agenda, but has brought to my attention, and I've been asked to speak about it, if you don't mind me taking an extra minute, and that is about the, um, the town meetings.
Yes.
The town meetings, everybody's complaining that, oh, I don't go to the town meetings[1681.21]